I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, September 27, 2023, regular Town Council meeting. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mike Corilio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondina.
Present.
Gerald Swatz.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Joe Wizwati.
Present.
David Westland.
Present.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
And three public comment. First on the list, I have Francis Ritter. Ryder.
Come forward.
Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Francis Ryder from 13714 River Bridge Court. I'd like to present a question that I don't know where to or to whom to direct. One is, how do we find out who has the permit to Saddle Creek Wetlands so that we can go forth with some maintenance that needs to be done there? I've called Oltoff, who was a builder. I've called here. I have several numbers that I don't know, again, where to direct these questions to, or how do I find out so that we can go ahead and take care of the creek, ponds, and safety of the walkway?
Okay. Do you guys have a homeowners association out there?
Yes, we do.
Joel, will you take your information down and contact her tomorrow?
Yeah, there are four of us members of the association, but I've... They claim, the HOA president claims they're... They don't have the permit either. So, I've called the I D E M and tried to get some answers there, but they seem to be opposed to doing any sort of maintenance when the willows have overgrown the paths and it's just unsafe for people to walk through there. There is drudging that needs to be done at one end of the creek by the bridge. Everything just seems to be at a halt for two years now.
All right.
Yeah. If you would, I'm gonna... I'll give you my card. You can give me a call. We can set up a meeting.
Wonderful.
Yeah, that would be great.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And look into it and see if it's something that the town takes care of.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know.
For sure.
Can we do a... I'm sorry, I'm also with the board. Can we also do a meet... Can we meet with you here, or would you be willing to come to one of our board meetings?
Either way.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll get your card then.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Barb Levin.
Barbara Levan, 13636 Stanton Court. Also with the board was Sella Creek Subdivision. Couple of my questions are, I came to one of the Parks Department meeting, this is either in May or June, to where we had asked about the bushes in front of Help Park, about them being cut. We would like the bushes trimmed down, but we are also, I was told at that time by Michael O'Shea, that the playground equipment, we were second on the list. Like to know where we're at with that, if the playground equipment is gonna be repaired or gonna be replaced. Also, with part of what Francis has said, there is an asphalt, not an asphalt, blacktop walkway in the back, and we've asked about that, to where the weeds are actually coming up from the asphalt. Whose responsibility would it be to replace that? The next question also is, so, I've been working with somebody with Public Works since May, and at the front of Saddle Creek Subdivision, the entrance where you come in, there's that wrong... Sorry. There's that island that's in the middle that you have to go on one side or the other. Nobody can find the buffalo box. Why? We can't get the water on. The water has not been on since 2018. We took out three of the bushes. The only thing that I've been told is that there must have been bushes someplace else, that when they took them out, the pipe came out with it. But what I don't understand is why you still can't find that buffalo box, which we can't get the water on, and I've been told, well, even if they do find it, there... Because it hasn't been turned on in such a long time, that it may not work. Okay, but we can't even fi... They can't find it. So, where do we go and what do we do? Because we are trying to make our front entrance, which the board did paint, and trying to replant flowers or plants to grow there, but without water, it's our expense to get water out there. When, if it was originally there, it's not at the west entrance, it's at the main entrance, because there's no sewers at the west entrance. But we can't get anybody to find it. We don't know what to do.
You've had the water department out there to find it?
Yep. Several times.
Well, Joel, if you can go down and have the water department either find it or install a new one.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll be having some conversations.
I mean, I've had quite a few talks and nobody... And this is since May, and nobody has done anything. So, why wasn't this ever done before that then? I mean, I've talked to someone, I'm not gonna name a name, but I've talked to someone several times about this. They've gone out there, they have several crews out there, they've taken out plants.
Well, if they can't find it, they need to just find the water service line and install a new shut-off.
But then why wasn't that done?
Well, this is the first I've heard about it.
There were several people out there, and that thing's not been used for so long.
Since 2018, correct.
So, and they're right, maybe when they... When somebody was out there, maybe they hit it and they took out the whole... It's just a pipe that sits on the water main.
That's what's mentioned, yes.
When that was put in, there was 13 water meters put in. Reichel Plumbing put all of that in. They did all through the whole subdivision. They paid for it one big check. Now, I don't know if that's the town's responsibility, or if that is actually, they would say, the homeowners association, that would be your B-box. I'm not sure. But there was quite a few people out there, and I don't know if they don't want to find it, or they can't find it. I'm sure, Joel, somebody will get in contact with the Public Works Director and find out. But sometimes you do all that and then they just abandon it and leave it. And I don't know what happened with it.
Wouldn't you have plans as far as reference to use to go back to, to where they were put in?
I could swear that it was in the bushes, but a mulch.
Yes, we checked those out, yes.
But I... I can't remember. But it did have a shut-off there at one time.
Yeah.
As far as I can remember.
That's where they did look. We took out the bushes because they couldn't find it. We gave them permission to take the bushes out, and still nothing.
Well, I think that's the water department's responsibility to supply them with water. They need to install a valve so these guys can... Or these folks can get their water. So, I put that on your list tomorrow and...
We'll be having those discussions tomorrow.
All right. Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you.
Joe Zick.
I have no questions.
Okay.
Ed Marson, 10704 Arbor Lane, St. John. Good evening, St. John Town Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Tonight on your agenda, council action item C-12, you're considering a special exemption for a vape shop at 10845 Parish Avenue, St. John. This address is a new single-story commercial building near the northeast corner of 231 and Parish Avenue, the Gates of St. John. This building is currently located in the St. John 231 Overlay District. During the July 26, 2023, St. John Council Meeting, Public Speaking Segment, Mr. Fred Benoit, who lives in the Gates of St. John, spoke and presented President Michael Schilling with a petition that had 168 people who are against this proposed vape shop. On August 21, at the St. John Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting, this vape shop request at the subject address was heard during a public hearing. Mr. Fred Benoit's petition against this vape shop was mentioned, along with other attendees, including myself, who are against this vape shop. The members of the St. John Board of Appeals voted unanimously four to zero to provide the St. John Town Council with an unfavorable recommendation regarding this vape shop. This new commercial building at 10845 Parish Avenue is approximately 350 feet south of Cherry's Garden in the Gates... In the Gates Childcare on Arbor Lane and 330 feet from a residential district to the north. Due to the proximity of the childcare facility, the residential district, the 168 people who are against this vape shop, and the unfavorable recommendation given by the St. John BZA, I'm requesting that the Town of St. John Town Council does not approve this vape shop request tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mary Ann Rooney.
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name's Mike Bovat. I live at 9291 West 103rd Place. Ed, thank you for your words. I greatly appreciate that. Just like to speak to the council in all respect and reemphasize the position that Ed has already spoken on, and that is that I have received phone calls and texts and admonition against any vape shop coming in to the Gates area. Any of you know as well as I do that the 231 overlay was really made for restaurants and things of that nature. It wasn't designed for this. And to listen to the people is what we need to be doing, and we do not want a vape shop. Please consider not granting that request. Want to make perfectly clear, as the incoming council and a member that represents them, that we have spoken to you discreetly. I've spoken up here before about not wanting to advance the software that you are contemplating. We will not be going forward with that, and I just want to make it perfectly clear. I've been discreet. I spoke up here. I've made it adamantly clear. The incoming council does not endorse, and we will not be moving. We want to focus on something more comprehensive. And just a little note also to keep in mind is that, as the incoming council, these are golden opportunities for those of you that will remain and be on the council come January 1st. We encourage and admonish you to take this opportunity to demonstrate your willingness to work with the council. Our goal is that all of us work together to advance what is necessary for the Town of St. John. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to speak while public comment is open? Just come and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Smith. I live at 8595 Larkspur. So, I just moved here two months ago. Thank you for all the town council that are here. Pardon?
Welcome to St. John.
Oh, thanks. So, we lived all over. We lived in Illinois, Ohio, you know, and we're here now. So, Mr. Wizwati has already heard of me because we had some issue. I live in the Gates. But, so I'm still trying to understand stuff, and that's why I came. And I promised my husband I wasn't gonna speak. Yeah. Dang it! But anyway, I just texted him.
He's not here, so...
Yeah, yeah, he's not here with me. So, we moved to St. John because it's beautiful. I mean, it's... You have green space. You have done a great job, whoever. I've gotten into the rat's nest with the Gates of St. John from September 4, 2005, when Mr. Lawton created the Gates. I live in 55 and older community, and we have a lot of widows that are in our community. And so, I want to take care of the ladies and the... They're retired, they walk their dogs during the day, they're out during the day. So, we're all a little cute community, and it's great, right? And they're like, are you sure you're 55? And I'm like, you want to see my license? I earned my stripes to be here. So, help me understand... Okay, and I don't even know what I can ask and what I can't ask, so I apologize. He was just saying, some of you, because I know it's switching in January, I wasn't here for your election. So, which one of you guys are staying?
I will be leaving.
Okay.
We're staying.
You're staying? Okay.
All of them on that end are staying.
Okay. They're leaving and you're staying. Okay, okay. Because what I've kind of... Thank you. Thank you very much. I wasn't here to vote, but, so, basically, the... You're Schilling. The Schilling family, what I've done my research, they've done a phenomenal job with keeping the integrity of St. John. I went to the post office 1932. They had, you know, their first grocery store. Okay, so, I am thankful to the Schillings that love St. John and want to give back. I don't know some other things. It's politics. What are you gonna do? There's politics in everything that we do. But now I'm in this rat's nest of, with Mr. Lawton and the Gates. Okay, whatever. So, we have, when we... And I don't know if I can ask you this, or I asked the building commissioner, so please tell me, or the building meeting that I was at, the planning building that referred to you. We have these, I call them barracks. When you come into the gates and you turn to the right, I've got four of them going up, and then four more are going up. It's ugly when you go in there. It's a brick wall. But that again is Mr. Lawton's legacy. You know, the Schillings have their legacy of the beautiful shrine. Mr. Lawton has his legacy of the Gates. Great concept on paper. Awesome concept. Like, I love it. Kind of got misconstrued since 2005. So, we now have these elderly ladies that are widows, they walk their dogs, they have to look at this, we have to look at it, I have to look at it too. Who tells them, like, if we can build what they have to, like, put landscaping? Who does that? Who has power to help us hide it as best we can?
That usually comes through the plan commission at the time that they come in.
The plan commission, which...
Which would have been in 2005.
Well, no, no, there's... No, no, there's been some wiggle room and different things going on since 2005. How he got his 58 things, and then he got 58 things, and then he got the over... Other side of Klein. Yeah. Wasn't that... Wasn't here for all that, negotiating and leverage that he used and all that. But there's really nothing we could do now. It's a done deal, basically.
That's correct.
With Mr. Lawton.
That's correct.
Okay, great. So, he...
Everything was agreed to back, Mike said, 2005.
Well, not everything.
Most all of everything.
I know.
They have a HOA and everything.
No, not everything.
Oh, don't even go there, Mr. Schilling, on that. That's another can of worms, dude. But no, everybody has...
Landscaping, no.
Yeah, no, I was just... Some of these houses that I drive down the street, they have those really big trees that you kind of hide it. The senior citizen community, beautiful building, brick, gorgeous. We have barracks. They're basically barracks when we drive in. And we have three, one more's going up, and then there's gonna be four more. And it's like, that's a brick wall right when you come in. So, we were just kind of wondering what we could do, but there's really nothing we could do, like, the 55 and older community, to kind of like, get... Make them big builder trees, make their landscaping be... Hide them. We just want to hide them as best we can. But there's really nothing we can do, because Mr. Blazak said, it was a done deal on September 4, 2005. I looked up those board members, don't have them right in here, because remember, I wasn't supposed to speak. I have those guys, they did the best that they could. I mean, you guys do the best that you can with the information that you have. So, you don't know when people are not being on the up and up, or what their hidden agenda is. So, I commend everybody that's in politics. You're doing the best that you can, unless you have your own hidden agenda, which, whatever. But I... No, no, I mean, I love St. John.
The landscape, eventually, it's small now, but it will grow and...
Ain't gonna grow that big. You could see, but thank you very much. There's nothing we can do. What?
What homes were you talking about?
The barracks. They're three stories, the ones that...
Okay, so those are what they call row homes.
The row homes, which technically are not supposed to be rented out. Oh, but they're getting rented out. You know, they're supposed to be sold, because we looked at them, they just didn't have storage or parking. But they're getting rented out. So, it's... It is what it is, and people are fudging what they're doing, but there's nothing we can do, because, right? Well, there was some things he's been able to. So, anyway, I hope the new board, I hope he doesn't continue to... I don't really know, but thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for coming out.
Yeah.
I'm telling your husband.
What?
I said I'm gonna tell your husband.
He knows, he knows.
Anybody else would like to address the council during public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on. Item four, approval of the minutes. You have the meeting minutes for August 23, 2023?
I'll make a motion to approve the Town Council regular meeting minutes, August 23, 2023.
I'll second.
Got a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, public hearing. This is ordinance number 1808, A through C, ordinances for the 2024 municipal budget for the Civil, Town, Sanitary, and Water Districts, as Bart said. Proof of publication.
Your budgets and the proofs were published according to law.
Opening remarks. Daniel Dalton, please.
Thank you. Over the last several months, we've met with all the department heads, we've looked at revenue projections, we've looked at cash flow projections, and we've... Any additional capital asset considerations that we need to put into consideration for this 2024 budget? And so, with that, last week, the Stormwater Board met, the Water Board met, and they considered the 2024 budget, and they will give their formal recommendation later in October. Last week, the council met for a study session, and they discussed what the 2024 budget would look like, and we had a short conversation about it. And so, I guess, opening remarks are... Tonight is our public hearing, and I would be happy to have a discussion about any conversations you'd like to have about the 2024 budget.
Thank you, Dan. Open the floor to public comment. Any public comment on the 2024 municipal budget? Going once, going twice, third time, no one? All right, I close the floor to public comment. I'll entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 1808A, Civil Town Budget on first reading only.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. Next would be the motion to consider ordinance number 1808B. This is the Sanitary District Budget. This would be on first reading only.
So moved.
Support.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. Next would be a motion to consider... I'll entertain a motion to consider ordinance number 1808C. This is the Water District Budget on first reading only.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. Moving on to new business, we have requests to purchases. There's a total of five requests to purchase in the combined amount of $297,646.69. Clerk Treasurer, would you like to go over them, please?
Sure. If you recall, we added one additional request to purchase for laying roofing. You actually approved the original request to purchase last month totaling $39,672. However, changes were discovered during installation, increasing the total price to $41,360.39. So, that was added to the stack for approval. You have... So, your total RTPs, six RTPs totaling $339,007.8. The first is from WS Darley totaling $201,501.45, and that's for your fire department gear. Franciscan Health, $9,000. That's for paramedic class for two firefighters. Image Trend, $14,490.92. That's for fire department billing and reporting software. Dell, for $27,902.32, and that's for a Town Hall server replacement. Laporte Chrysler, $44,752, and that's for a police vehicle for the new officer hire. So, again, the total of the six RTPs has been adjusted to $339,007.8.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next is the Account Palesville's voucher dated September 27, 2023, representing payment for payroll purchases, supplies, equipment, services rendered to the Town of St. John I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Account's payable voucher dated September 27, 2023, representing payment for payroll purchases, supplies, equipment, services rendered to the Town of St. John in the combined total of $3,542,327.46.
Support.
Motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, consider motion to approve progress payment to FH Passion for the 93rd Avenue Project in the amount of $46,083.7, and authorize the Clerk Treasurer to issue payment from the 2020 Geo Bond.
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next would be consider motion to approve progress payment to First Group for Construction Engineering for 93rd Avenue Project in the amount of $50,482.70, and authorize the Clerk Treasurer to issue payment from 2020 Geo Bond.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. On the ordinances, ordinance number 1807, and an ordinance establishing the NERC C N. dot LPA Program Fund, number 2405. I'll entertain a motion to consider ordinance 1807 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on, resolution number...
Do you have a second reading? Since that was unanimous, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 1807 on second reading.
I'll second.
Motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Resolution number 2023-0927A, a resolution providing for the transfer of appropriations from various funds of the Town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana, for year 2023, for the action and passage by the Town Council pursuant to IC 6-1-1-18-6.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Resolution number 2023-09-27B, a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer's office to file an appeal for an increase above the maximum levy.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Resolution number 2023-0927C, a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer's office to file an appeal for an increase above the maximum levies sanitary district?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Resolution number 2023-09-27D, a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer's office to file an appeal for increase above the maximum levy for the water district?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, a motion to approve and declare property surplus and authorize the disposal of such property by advertising its sale or disposed of through any other means pursuant to Indiana law. This is for 28 Scott brand self-contained breathing apparatus, which are 15 years old and are out of compliance and do not meet the NFPA standards.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Consider motion to approve agreement with Central Square Technologies LLC in the town of St. John for a two-year term.
I'd like to make a motion to defer this, Mr. President.
I have a motion to defer on... Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries five to zero. Consider motion to approve agreement by the Mad Bomber Fireworks Production of LaPorte, Indiana, in the town of St. John.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, consider motion to approve special exemption BZA at 9601 Industrial Drive Suite A, St. John, for the Falling Sands Distillery within an industrial district.
So I would also like to make a motion to defer this. If we defer this, this allows this petitioner to come back another day. Dave?
He can't.
No.
He can't come back.
The council could reconsider.
Yeah, I mean, just go on your next agenda.
Okay, so we... So it's not at the end. So because my understanding, after talking to a few of the gentlemen on the BZA, is that there's some missing documentation and details. Sounds like a nice enterprise, sounds like something nice for the town, but it's not quite complete what we need yet, so...
We need some permits.
That's right. So I'd like to make a motion to defer this.
But...
I'll second it.
Okay, I'd like to speak against the motion.
I have a motion, I have a second, I'll open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to speak against the motion. I think there are some things that are required permit-wise by the state. But I think if we approve this thing pending approval by the state, we're done with it. He can move forward. He can file with the state to try to get some of these things done without us holding the whole thing up.
Could I...
Go ahead.
Could I just interject? So I understand, Mr. Aurelio, what you're looking for, but you're essentially asking him to present you with additional evidence, which you cannot do.
Got it.
So I think, you know, your options, right? Like if I had to give you your options right now are to vote yes, and you could impose reasonable conditions upon that approval. So if there's additional information that you want, like some permit that he doesn't have, and I don't know what it is, but you could make that part of your motion to approve. So then he wouldn't have a special exception without that stuff.
And then if we vote...
If you vote no, I'd have to look at your ordinance, but most municipal ordinances provide that upon a negative vote, it can't be brought up for a period of time. Most of the time, it's six months or a year. So you would be basically, if you voted no, you'd be putting him off for a year. If you take no action for 60 days, then he gets it. He gets his thumbs up, right? Like, and he gets it without the conditions you're looking for. So those are your three choices.
So if I defer, at least...
You could defer it a month.
I don't need to see more evidence, but we'll see what happens, right? So I'm just uncomfortable, so just, I understand. I'm uncomfortable approving something seems a wrong order, right? So we're supposed to have approvals, and we take a look at them. We are not experts in ear quality and corn release and, you know, by seeing, you know, and all that stuff. We are not. Just myself, I'm uncomfortable approving something that without state approval, and I think it's a bad precedent to put the cart before divorce.
And I guess the other point I would have for you, understanding what you're saying, is if you would approve it, and he doesn't ever get the state approval, he's not opening up anyway.
Correct.
So... So I hear you, and you certainly, you're within the timeline. I just looked at it. You're within the timeline to defer it, certainly, but a month. But I don't know if in a month's time, you're gonna be, you're gonna be right back in the same spot.
So if this came back next, so if we defer this, it can come back without risk of injury to the party here for our next regular scheduled meeting.
Mr. President, if I...
I'd have to look to... I don't see... Well, hang on. When's your meeting in October?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty... That's right.
Counting the days.
Twenty-fifth.
The question I had, Mr. President, is if the council were to vote on this with the condition of, you know, all state permits are obtained and pending legal review, you know, with the... With legal looking at it and saying, yeah, it meets the requirements, you know, we should be good, that might give you a little bit of comfort in your decision.
That does add some comfort.
Yeah.
That would be the specific conditions I was referring to.
Right.
Okay.
All right, did you want to amend your motion then?
Well, it's to defer, so the second one has to be withdrawn, and then he could do whatever he wants.
So withdraw your first.
I'll withdraw my motion, but I'll let you guys make the next motion.
Did you withdraw your second?
Brian, yeah.
Brian?
I'll withdraw the second.
Okay, so I would speak in favor of this, but I'd like to see some conditions. State authorization, state permits that would be necessary, need to be in order.
And pending legal review.
And pending legal review.
Okay.
Anything else that you guys need to see there? You're good with that? Then that will be my motion.
Your motion is to approve pending...
State permits.
Conditioned upon receipt of...
Conditioned upon the receipt of state permits and a legal review.
I'll second. Is there a second on that? Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, consider acceptance of performance security bond in the amount of $187,690.06 for the St. John Commons Phase One.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Next, consider acceptance of performance security in the amount of $5,500.06 for the Continental Unit Three.
So moved.
Support.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, consider acceptance of performance security in the amount of $13,530.06 for the Gates of St. John Unit 25.
So moved.
Motion second. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, consider acceptance of three-year maintenance letter of credit in the amount of $256,481.70 for the Preserve Unit Six.
So moved.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, consider motion to approve the use variance at 9321 Wicker Avenue, St. John, for Clark Pediatrics Dentistry within the US 41 overlay district?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, consider motion to approve a special exemption at 9525 Wicker Avenue, St. John for CDL Holdings within a C2 commercial highway zoning district?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, consider motion to approve a use variance at 9525 Wicker Avenue, St. John, for the CLD Holdings within the St. John US 41 overlay district?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, consider motion to approve a special exemption at 10845 Parrish Avenue, St. John, for the SR and with a C2 commercial highway zoning district and the US 231 overlay district?
Mr. President, if I just might bring this to the attention of the council in case you weren't aware, but as Mr. Martian said, this does come to the council with an unfavorable recommendation. This recommendation was recommended unanimously by a four to two... Four to, excuse me, four to zero vote.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny the approval.
I have a motion to deny, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Information here, you got any information?
Those were presented to the clerk.
Already presented?
Yep.
All right, reports?
We don't have to cover D, Mike? What?
What's that?
Those item, the item, the legal notice, and other legal notice.
Yeah, those items were presented for the clerk to be placed on file.
Okay, it doesn't say that here, but... I mean, it does, but why is it on the program?
Look at ID.
All right, we're all good there. Beth, do you have anything this evening?
No.
Nope.
No.
Anybody here from Robinson?
Not this evening.
Don't see him.
Evan's here tonight, though.
Evan, you want to give us an update?
Evening, council. You can finally see some progress out there. We managed to flip traffic this week. We got the... We have the west side of US 41 switched over. We have a little bit more work on the north side of the intersection at 41. But this week will be quiet tomorrow, but we'll have a dig-out crew back here on Friday to start cleaning up ahead of the concrete crews. And then we should see some underground work starting Monday morning, likely the sewer work on 93rd, and then we'll start the water main work on Kyleman end of the week, probably the following week roughly, depending on how well they actually do. Current schedule, we're not too backed up into things yet. We still have a few weeks, as long as we're not battling any cold weather come end of October. So we should be able to hit on schedule and say, can get complete this year, get asphalt on the ground surface, new striping and everything. So not too panicked yet about anything. I'd love to answer any... Ooh, love to answer any questions if you guys have anything.
You feel comfortable with the schedule, Evan?
I do. It's not nearly as much work on this other side. There's...
Seems to be a lot less.
It's a lot less. We already did all the underground work except for about five inlets.
You had about a month or...
About a month roughly. And we should see all the asphalt work starting to go down.
Did you get any word back from Passion and Gatlin about that extending the water main the rest of the way on Kyleman?
We're gonna be providing quantities to them the next day.
You don't have numbers yet, but...
Yeah, I don't have any numbers yet. It's looking favorable if, as long as the funding is there. We can, we'll have those discussions as we get some more information to the contractors. I should be able to provide them with quantities for that tomorrow. And then, like I said, Gatlin will be here on Monday, so I'll likely have for sure information over the weekend or by Monday morning.
So in what, what you're talking about is they could put in the rest of the water main on the west side of Kyleman. It's gonna go directly underneath the sidewalk. There might not possibly be a sidewalk there for winter time, but you're getting ahead of the game or for next year, the plans, so that the residents would have a possible no sidewalk or a blacktop sidewalk, whatever they decide, or maybe stone. It would be an inconvenience, but inconvenience through the winter. And then in the spring, the concrete could go in for the sidewalk. The curb can start going in, they could re-mill the road further on down. It could make the project go a little quicker.
That is correct.
Having to have that complication in the spring and in the summer.
That is correct. So Public Works has kind of reached out to me. They're starting to have some concerns about the integrity of the main that we're gonna be leaving in the ground. So they have asked if the contractor is willing to participate in doing, completing that main this year. It would require a tad bit of temporary work to go down. There would be some discussions we'd still have to have with everybody at the town level to see how we wanted to button the job up and keep it ready for next year's community crossings project to finish off the roadway project. It would aggressively help the schedule, especially as this is gonna be a community crossings project. If we wanted to not hold, hinder school at all, the school start next year, doing this work now would not only hold the pricing, which may increase by next summer anyways, but it would allow the schedule to be shortened. It's not too much work, but anything we could get done underground, it would allow the asphalt or concrete contractors to get in there right away.
And it also gives the ground some time to compress, because you're gonna put a sidewalk right on top of the main. So that could be a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, it would give the trench a little bit of time to settle, and hopefully we wouldn't see any settling over time in that sidewalk. That's correct.
Thanks, Evan.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joe, you have anything?
Yeah, just real quick, wanted to let everyone know that we did confirm with NDOT that our CCMG projects for 2021, '22 were all closed out fine, and we just wanted to confirm that for eligibility for our 2024 CCMG project request. So that's all I have.
Is that going in, Joe?
No, that won't go until next year.
Next year, okay.
Wayne, do you have anything?
No.
Jerry?
Nothing to do with the tri-town Safety Village and really no changes in anything that's going on at NERCCE, so everything's good there. Mr. Bobot addressed the council earlier, and I am definitely interested in software to make this town work. So if you've got some ideas, I would be more than happy, more than interested in hearing what they are and get started on this instead of waiting until January. As far as comments about working together, I suggested in another public meeting that we include the incoming council on interviewing for new building and planning director. But nobody's reached out to me yet at this point. So I would, hopefully, we can get started on some of that stuff. That's all.
Do we have any applicants for building and planning?
How's the process going, Joe?
Currently, we have one candidate.
All right. And are you working with the jury or any of you guys from the incoming?
I have discussed it with Councilman Swets, and I agree that's probably a good process on how to move forward with that.
All right.
Not tonight.
All right?
No, sir.
And Jerry, were you done? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I think I got... I don't have anything to do with it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Time out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll that through. Open house, October, is it on Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday.
Saturday, October 7th. Come on out and meet you guys from the fire department and police department.
Lots of things for the kids to see and do. It's a nice, nice event.